Saltzman?
Here.
Sorry. I might. Novick?
Here.
Fritz? Hales? Fish?
Here. Welcome, everybody. Mayor Hales is in Europe doing council business, and as the president of the council, I have the honor of chairing today's meeting. And we're going to begin by having me read a script. The purpose of council meetings is the orderly consideration of the public's business. Preservation of order and decorum is necessary for due consideration of matters before council. We welcome the public to attend and fully participate in our meetings. During the meetings, there will be time-limited opportunities for public comments on various agenda items. Although citizens can sign up for communications, public testimony on a council calendar item must address the matter being considered. Please state your name for the record, and we do not need your address. If you are a lobbyist, please disclose that information at the start of your testimony. If you are here representing an organization, I ask that you disclose that as well. Unless otherwise informed, each community member will have three minutes to speak in front of the council. At 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you'll start to hear an annoying beep, and a light will flash on the box before you. At 3 minutes, you'll hear four beeps, and the lights will continue to flash, and that will be notice to you that it's time to let the next person speak. I ask that all of you respect the time limits so that there is time to hear from everybody who signed up to address matters before us. If you have a handout today, please give it to Carla, our council clerk, and she will distribute it to the council members and make sure it goes into the record. And again, please limit your testimony to the matters at hand. Council rules of procedure seek to preserve the public order and to ensure that council's deliberations proceed efficiently and that all who want to participate get to be heard. Conduct that disrupts the meeting, for example shouting during other people's presentations or interrupting testimony, will not be allowed. We would ask you, if you want to show your support or displeasure, to use your hands by waving thumbs up, thumbs down, and the like. And this is officially a warning to anyone who is thinking of disrupting our proceedings, and you shall be escorted from the council and excluded from City Hall if these rules are not followed. Finally, if needed, council will be taking a lunch break at either 12:00 or 12:30, depending on the schedule. Obviously, our preference is to get through them, all of our work, before breaking, and we have a full afternoon. But we'll announce later in the day what our schedule is if it looks like we're going to be tight. And with that, Carla, let's move to communications, and would you please read item number 377?
Request of Shadrick J. Wilkins to address council regarding OMSI, R2D2, move solar cells, and low-energy lifestyle.
Mr. Wilkins, welcome.
I'm trying to overcome my fear of public speaking, which I have over the last five years.
You do great. Just state your name for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
All right. Five years ago, I was homeless, and I tried to stay while working at my job at Dignity Village. And Dignity Village at the time was having fights about energy, and they were thinking about getting a grant for solar cells. And then I heard you're going to, which I like solar cells, and I'd like to promote alternative energy. People who are homeless or live homeless use propane tanks for heat. They could use solar cells. Anyway, I got on HUD housing, and now I'm a veteran and stuff like that. Thirty percent of my income. I still like to double back, and I heard you are going to move Right to Dream Two to OMSI, although it's appealed. If you do, instead of looking down at homeless people like they're in a zoo, why don't you try to get these homeless people to use solar cells so they can get online, try to make the camp off the grid? I actually walked by Third and Harrison the other day. I like OMSI. And OMSI right now has an excellent exhibit put on by a company called Solo World, and actually how they make solar cell panels. It's in the north side of the engine hall. Excellent. And then there's another one with Intel shows how they use solar cells in third-world countries so that children can learn in villages. Intel and Solo World have two excellent exhibits there, actually how you make the things. And I would, in this one, next year, I would like to go to Salem. I've been here too long in Portland. I'd like to move to Salem and maybe be a lobbyist. And if I fail, I've given up my HUD apartment, so I'll be working. I might have to use the homeless place that I want to be solar-powered. Certainly not exclusively solar-powered, but just say that they're somewhat off the grid. And like I say, even at Dignity Village, there was energy fights. They paid a community electric bill, and when I was trying to get in there, they were trying to get some grants for solar panels so that they could get on their cellphone, their laptop, and stuff like that. Also, anything done at OMSI could also be used at Dignity Village. Dignity Village is unobscured to the south. And if I had lived there for $200 a year, I would have, instead of my $2,000 HUD apartment, I could have spent $2,000 a year on solar cells. And I would have got a humidifier. Somebody had a noisy generator next to this shack I was in, and also you wouldn't have to have these noisy generators. And I've seen this site near OMSI, and I think it's an excellent place to say that we're using science for homeless people.
Thank you very much.
Just a clarification, Mr. Wilkins. The site is, the better landmark is near the Goodwill. It's about a half a mile from OMSI. And indeed, Right to Dream Two is looking at whether they can use sustainable development options, including solar, so thank you for your testimony.
I'd like to help them do that.
Thank you very much, sir. Carla, would you please read council item number 378?
Request of Brad Perkins to address council regarding Sullivan's Gulch Trail.
Good morning, Mr. Perkins.
Good morning. How are you?
Welcome. You just state your name, and you have three minutes, sir.
Glad to see you. This is not about Sullivan's Gulch. I'll wait for this afternoon to address that issue. This has to do with Emmanuel Hospital. My name is Brad Perkins, land use chair of North Northeast Business Association. In March 1971, Emmanuel Hospital signed an agreement with five other parties to provide land for up to 300 affordable housing units. Other signatories, PDC, HAP, and the Emmanuel Displacement Persons Association, were to work together to make it happen. That was 45 years ago, and housing has not been built there since. Here are a few quotes from the agreement. "That the parties agreed to cooperate in the development of the aforementioned area within the Emmanuel Hospital Urban Renewal Project with approximately 100 to 300 units of federally assisted low and moderate-income housing, including public housing and complementary residential and supportive use." "The parties agree that all the parties will cooperate in providing federally assisted housing to achieve the goal of replacing all the existing housing units demolished as a result of Emmanuel Hospital Urban Renewal Project. It is concluded that each and every party agrees to the above principles and objectives and will devote the maximum energy and enthusiasm attained toward achieving the above goals and improving the housing situation of model cities' residents." Four months after this agreement was signed, Mrs. Leo Warren, chair of the Emmanuel Displacement Persons Association, wrote a letter to John Kenward, executive director of PDC, stressing the need to begin the housing replacement process. Instead of helping the community by facilitating the replacement of demolished housing, Mr. Kenward institutionally ignored the Portland Development Commission's agreed-upon obligations. He convinced the chairman of the Metropolitan Human Relations Commission that there was no need for a hearing on this matter. You can see the letters. Why bother replacing housing when the signed agreement released that it needed $5 million from the Federal Housing and Urban Development Program, known as HUD, so that PDC and Emmanuel could finish working together to buy up 22 blocks of property with the force of eminent domain displacing mostly black tenants and clearing the land? NEBA, NECN, Elliot Neighborhood, and the Urban League insist that the Portland City Council do the right thing. Begin the process of creating up to 300 affordable housing units as agreed to by the city and Emmanuel by rezoning three blocks of Emmanuel's property at the southeast corner of their campus from IR to M3. It's past the time to heal from the institutional racist violence endured years ago by hundreds of people. After all, aren't hospitals in the business of healing? The scars of vacant lots are the blight of today. I just wanted to say that, you know, everybody puts their pants on the same way because they're a major institution. It's all about people, and it's about negotiating an agreement that's fair to the city council and the community and Emmanuel Hospital. And that's all that we're asking and hope for after this land is rezoned.
Mr. Perkins, just the documents you've given us are an agreement signed by, among others, the Portland Development Commission and what used to be known as the Housing Authority of Portland.
Yes.
And then there's some correspondence.
Yes.
And if we wanted to find the additional documents in the record, did you get these from the archives?
Yeah, they're all at the archives, and there's a lot more there.
Do you have some also additional documents?
Yeah, in my file. I have plenty, and it's worth checking into. It's quite interesting stuff.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Carla, would you please read council item 379?
Request of Jack Fruing to address council regarding Sullivan's Gulch Trail.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. How are you?
Fine, welcome. All we need is your name, and you have three minutes.
My name is John Fruing. It's somewhat maybe out of order that I want to talk about Sullivan's Gulch Trail when the community is having difficulty managing the different peoples who want to use the Spring Water Trail. But the Sullivan's Gulch Trail is different, and it needs to be pushed forward by the council. There has been a study, there have been studies over the last dozen years regarding the Spring Water Trail, and yet nothing has gone forward except one piece out by I-205. We need to promote the Sullivan's Gulch Trail, not only because east Portland is generally flat, as opposed to the hilly side on the west, and because of the increasing conflict between pedestrians and bicycles and automobiles on the street. We need some off-street communication. But the need is to get money for engineering and proceed, put it in the budget so that we get going on this trail. There are actually two trails, two Sullivan's Gulch Trails. One near the top of the bluff on the north side, across the street from Metro, Oregon Building, BPA, et cetera. And then down along the railroad, there's another trail in their concept plan that goes all the way out to Gateway and even beyond. The northern, the upper trail is what I'm interested in. I live at Holiday Park Plaza, and our folks walk in the neighborhood. And they don't want to walk long distances, but they need to walk somewhere. And there is an existing legal easement, pedestrian easement from 16th to 21st that already exists that could be built. The city owns it, and I urge you to get that particular piece on the agenda for funding in the next year or so.
Sir, I want to just ask Commissioner Novick, we had a presentation not long ago, Steve, where you came forward with a PBOT list of projects that were in the pipeline. I believe there were a number of Sullivan's Gulch projects that were on that list. Is that correct?
In a word, yes.
Okay. So, sir, thank you for bringing your perspective, and I believe the opportunity has been framed. The question is now finding the funding.
Right.
So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Carla, would you please read council item number 380?
Request of Frederick Allen Maxwell to address council regarding his cat.
Mr. Maxwell, are you here?
Oh, I was looking forward to hearing about the cat.
Okay. All right. We're now going to move to a time certain, but first, we're going to take up the consent And Carla, what's been pulled?
Item 384.
384 has been pulled. Does anyone wish to pull any other items on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Carla, would you please call the roll?
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye. And Carla, after we've done the two-time certance, we'll take up 384 as the first order of business on the regular agenda. Okay, we have two-time certance. We're right on time. Carla, would you please read council item 381?
Amend an intergovernmental agreement with Metro for development of a preferred alternative package, locally-preferred alternative, and draft environmental impact statement for the southwest corridor plan.
Commissioner Steve Novick.
Colleagues, technically, what we're doing today is making a somewhat ministerial amendment, which Teresa Boyle will explain, but it's also an opportunity to talk about the importance of and the goals we have with the southwest corridor plan. The southwest corridor plan aims to provide a range of high-capacity transit, bicycle, roadway, and pedestrian improvements to communities in southwest Portland and southeast Washington County. Today, we're confirming the addition of city funds to Metro in order to further the required environmental analysis for the project. The outcome will be a DEIS, a locally-preferred alternative, which will in turn qualify us to seek federal funding to complete design of the project to move it to our construction. Those living and working in the southwest corridor currently struggle with traffic congestion and a lack of transportation options. Issues of connectivity affect access to major employment, education, and retail centers. By bringing high-capacity transit to southwest, we're completing the transit backbone for our region that was first envisioned over 35 years ago. This essential addition to our high-capacity transit network would come just in time as we get ready for the large numbers of people projected to move here in the next 20 years. Not only is transit important to the region, it's important to the city. We look to our investment and participation in this project as a way to achieve lasting benefit for Portlanders while furthering the city's goals around jobs, housing, overall mobility, sustainability, and the environment. We seek to ensure that the southwest corridor plan finds ways to connect all of those important places in the corridor that can't be reached directly with high-capacity transit, not just in Portland, but in Tigard, Tuolleton, and points beyond. This means there needs to be a strong focus on adding elements to the transportation network so people could walk or bike to use transit. It also means we have to do a better job of distributing park-and-ride facilities to spread out the number of places where people drive and then ride instead of concentrating so much of it in Portland. Maximizing park-and-ride opportunities in suburban communities where patrons begin and end their ride is an ethic that we feel must be embraced. And we're counting on Neil and Bob and the rest of the steering committee to work with us to make this happen. And I will now turn it over to the honorable Teresa Boyle.
I'm Teresa Boyle with the Bureau of Transportation, and I'm the city's manager for the southwest corridor plan and the associated high-capacity transit project. With me today momentarily is Joe Zender from the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, councillor Bob Stacy and Malu Wilkinson from Metro, and Neil McFarlane is joining us from Trimest. Providing letters of support are two of our other jurisdictional partners, Washington County and the city of Tuolleton, and you should have those in your packet. Because we're a little tight around the table, I'll be taking a seat in the audience so Neil can come join you, and I'll return after the presentations are complete. So we, along with our other regional partners, are funding the planning efforts to complete a DEIS and select an LPA, both of which are required in order to seek federal funds.
Could you spill those out for both of those terms?
Oh, yes, absolutely. DEIS is draft environmental impact statement. LPA is a locally-preferred alternative. Thank you. The council action under consideration today is an amendment to the IGA that we have with Metro for the southwest corridor plan. Last winter, we executed this agreement in order to provide a $500,000 city contribution to studying the project. And today, we are proposing an amendment to add a second final contribution of $550,000 from the city, which has been authorized in the current budget for '15-'16. This will bring our total contribution to $1,050,000, which is about 11% of the total budget for the study. We're also spending city funds to keep staff working on the project, and that's a total of $300,000 for the two-year period. So if there are no process-related questions about the amendment itself, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Well, good morning, commissioners. Joe Zender, chief planner with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. I have two points I'd like to make today. First, we're sort of previewed in the Commissioner Novick's comments. You know, where we started this project on the city side with Metro and Trimest was with a land use vision for southwest Barber, and it allowed us to get a clearer understanding of the consensus view with both the community and the stakeholders about what kind of place do we think we can convert southwest Barber into? How can we use transit to advance that cause? Going from surface parking lots and one-story retail to mixed-use centers, going from unsafe corridors for pedestrians to pedestrian safer centers that support pedestrian traffics to, in those mixed-use locations, have more housing options. So then our question became, how to use the design of the transit project to help advance those causes? So as we go into this DEIS phase, that continues to be sort of the lens that we'll look at it from the housing, or from the community development, the planning side. But secondly, since we did that plan in 2013, we worked on the Powell Division corridor. And on the Powell Division corridor, we were asked by Metro to have Gresham and the city of Portland develop a local action plan. Also, since, which really because of the makeup and the direction of the steering committee on the Powell Division project, that local action plan, which you'll see in the near future, is focused on economic development and affordable housing development because of the concern, and especially in that corridor, for displacement, because that's the communities that are there. Secondly, since we approved that Barber concept plan, we've all become largely aware of the housing crisis and the lack of housing affordability and increasing cost of housing in the city. So with the Powell Division action plan, we came up with this joint PDC, Housing Bureau, city sort of proposal of actions, and the community accepts it as sort of a good foundation, a good composite of what one might do, but we don't have the funding to implement it. And since that corridor is still in flux, we've considered a number of options like TIF and the like. So we'll come back at it. But when we look at Barber, when we look at that project on Powell Division, that was like a $160 million transit project. And Barber is $2 billion-ish. And so that component of a housing strategy that goes with this, really what's going to be a critically important high-capacity transit project that we're looking forward to, seems to be underdeveloped right now. So I think as we also, the city, look at this, we need to be upping our game on anticipating that. And when you think of the level of funding regionally that we're going to need to raise to build this project, it seems that we would probably expect that we would have a housing component that would be part of that regional look at funding. So as we go into the next phase, which we greatly support with Housing Bureau planning, at least we'll start to try to move forward our thinking on an affordable housing component.
You're looking at me.
Bob, welcome.
Council President Fish, members of the commissioners. I'm Bob Stacy, Metro councillor and co-chair of the steering committee for the southwest corridor project. I want to thank you for taking the time to spend a few minutes to review the progress to date in anticipation of the next phase, which is the important one of going through the federal environmental impact statement process and emerging with an alternative that would be presented for decision. As I have to acknowledge both Commissioner Novick's leadership role and the leadership of the city of Portland as a whole in this project. There are a number of voices, a number of needs, and between Commissioner Novick, the excellent work of the city staff, and the work that this council did to ensure that the voices of the organized neighborhood associations in southwest Portland would be heard on a regular basis, and in a process that enables them to be actively engaged in an informed way, we have a much strengthened process. Thanks for your leadership on that. This is, as Commissioner Novick noted, using his radio voice, that was very impressive. This is the last spoke, if you will, from a Portland-centric perspective, the last major quarter in our region to be considered for a high-capacity transit investment. This is an investment in transportation choices, in a wide variety of transportation modes, not solely high-capacity transit. And it will add great accessibility to this part of the region, and it's two-way accessibility. If you're a resident of southwest Portland, you have destinations, including future employment opportunities that are emerging in southwest, in the southeast part of Washington County, as well as into downtown. There's increased capacity for transit as well as other modes of travel locally and along the corridor. And of course, the people in southeast Washington County, Tigard, Tuolleton, and other cities will have greatly improved access to the regional center, the central city of Portland. Steering Committee is wrestling with some tough choices. We literally cannot get to every one of the desirable destinations in this corridor, as you've heard before, because they are not all right along one single line. And so those choices are ones that we urgently need the city's leadership on, and we need the information about a variety of choices yet to be made that will come from the environmental impact statement. So we look forward to continuing with this collaborative relationship with the city's active engagement at all levels, including its citizenry. And Malu Wilkinson, the project manager on Metro's side, will provide an update and overview. Thanks for your help today.
All right. Good morning, commissioners. I'm happy to be here. Malu Wilkinson, Metro's Investment Areas Manager. And I get the pleasure of following these guys, so you'll at least see something to go along with the words that you've already heard. So I am happy to be back here today. We were here before you in January of 2015. And so my point is really to both remind you all in some images why we are looking at the southwest corridor, and then give you a progress report on where we are and where we're aiming to go. So as you heard Joe talk about, and very eloquently, we started out this southwest corridor plan effort by asking each of the communities throughout the southwest corridor to identify what their land use vision is. And you can kind of see in the background on your screen that there are a bunch of circles all across, and this also highlights councillor Stacy's comment that you can't really get to all of the places that we'd like to get to. Those all are places that the communities identified. And what we're trying to do, as we think about investing in transportation from a regional perspective, is how we can best align these major transportation investments in a way that supports local community vision so that we are achieving all of our goals across the region. So a couple of images, you know, you look at these cars on the road. This is not why we live in Oregon. This is not what we want our days to be like, is sitting in traffic. This is one of the issues that we have in the southwest corridor. This is not the reason that you love your neighborhood when you can't walk safely around your neighborhood. You can't get to where you want to go unless you get in a car. And these are a couple of, you know, what we're really doing this for is for the people. These are a couple of images of people who live and work and have businesses in Sherwood and Tuolleton. So this really is a regional investment, and we're thinking about the people and their needs and opportunities across all of the southwest portion of our region. Some of the challenges and opportunities that you saw earlier, really, there's a significantly high travel demand throughout the corridor. It's not all coming into downtown Portland. There's a significant amount that does, and it goes back and forth. But there's also a high travel demand over to Beaverton and Hillsdale and Wilsonville and Salem. And this is a part of the region that is growing, and we are anticipating that it will continue to grow. There are some major urban growth boundary expansion areas around Beaverton and Tigard and Sherwood, and all of those communities are growing rapidly. There's increased traffic congestion and unreliable travel times. Right now, if you try and drive between downtown Portland and Tuolleton, it could take 14 minutes if there's no traffic. It could take 55 minutes if there is traffic. And so if you need to get someplace on time to pick up your kid, to get to work, to get home, for whatever reason, you need to plan for an hour in your car, even if it only takes you 14 minutes. So that's a big issue. There's a lack of safe infrastructure and connectivity for walking, biking, and driving. This is really partly because of the topography, the geography of this part of the region. It's beautiful. There are a lot of hills. There are a lot of hills, and it's not very well-connected in some places. And there's insufficient and unreliable transit. You'll hear from Neil after me about some of the efforts that Trimet has been making to improve the local transit service in the Southwest Corridor, but it's, there are large portions of the area that has a lack of transit service. So that, all of those reasons are why we identified the Southwest Corridor as a region. In 2010, the green that you see on your image, both the light and the dark, that's, in 2010, this was identified as the region's top priority for investment, for looking at investments, both in high-capacity transit and all types of transportation modes. And what you see here is a map of our regional transit system. If you look closely, you'll notice there are no cities on that map. It's places. These are, this is where people want to go. When you're a person trying to get around, you're thinking about trying to get to a Blazers game, to get to your job, whether it's at the airport, or Nike, or Intel, or in Wilsonville, you're trying to go shopping. You want to be able to get to where you want to go. And you can see by the dotted lines, those are the Powell Division Project and the Southwest Corridor Project. Those are really filling some missing gaps in the regional network. So progress to date. In July 2013, the Steering Committee recommended a shared investment strategy that was based on that land use vision. It included parks investments, a large number of bike, pedestrian, and road projects that were focused on that land use vision, and it narrowed the high-capacity transit options that we study further. Each of the project partners on the Steering Committee endorsed that shared investment strategy. And then we moved to June 2014, where we really refined what we were looking at. In July of 2015, the Steering Committee removed Markham Hill and Hillsdale tunnels from further consideration due to a number of issues, both impacts, community feedback, and the ability to identify alternative connections that would work almost as well as those expensive, impactful tunnels. In January of 2016, the Steering Committee identified Bridgeport Village in Tuolleton as the preferred terminus for a high-capacity transit line, and refined some of the alignments through Tigard. And anticipated in May of 2016 is a Steering Committee recommendation on the right transit mode for the corridor, whether it's light rail or bus rapid transit, and the best way, if a tunnel to serve the Sylvania campus is the best way to serve that Sylvania campus. So I just want to give you a couple of other images. If you look at this, this is what we started with when we were looking at high-capacity transit lines, and this is where we are now. We've done a lot of work over the last six years. If you, you know, you can see how much we've focused in on what makes the most sense for this part of the region. You heard Counselor Stacy remind us that it is not just high-capacity transit that this part of the region needs. It needs a number of different kinds of investments to help people. Not everyone will take a high, will take transit. We need improvements in road, bike, and pedestrian opportunities to move around. On the left, you can see that in green, some of the projects we've identified. We need local bus service improvements. Trimet has worked on the Southwest Service Enhancement Plan to help with that. And the implementation of that is really important for this part of the region as well. And there is the high-capacity transit, which we're kind of focusing in on. Along with a high-capacity transit investment come a number of potential investments in road improvements, bicycle and pedestrian connections. And so we've tried to highlight some of these here. In Southwest Portland, some of what we're looking at is a way to connect the Barber-Nato area to Markham Hill that would allow more of a connection between those neighborhoods and for the people who work up there. More sidewalks and bike lanes, particularly all along Barber, that we know is not always a safe place for people to bike. And so that's part of what is included as part of a high-capacity transit project. This is just as important in Tigard and Tuolleton. And these shared investment strategy projects that we're talking about, we're kind of working through a process right now of identifying what would be included in a draft environmental impact statement and what wouldn't. If it's included, it doesn't mean it's funded, but it means that we're focusing in on it a little bit more. If it's not included, we need to work together to figure out how to get these projects to move forward, because they are all important. So we are working right now with your staff and with the communities in the Southwest Portland area and in Tigard and Tuolleton to figure out which ones make the most sense to fit in which category, and we'll be working on that through the fall. This is our overall timeline. In May, I already told you, we're anticipating a Steering Committee, some Steering Committee direction. In June, they'll be kind of putting all the pieces together and recommending a high-capacity transit preferred alternative package for moving into a draft environmental impact statement, at which we're anticipating beginning a scoping period, which is a huge amount of public review in late summer, early fall. And we're aiming to finish that draft environmental impact statement in 2017, at the end of that, with a locally preferred alternative adopted by the region in 2018. I just wanted to highlight a little bit of the engagement that we have been doing. We've been trying to reach people both in person and through online activities, because we reach different demographics in different ways. So those are some examples of what we've learned, or how we've reached people so far. These are also some examples of stories. We've been trying to get people in their own words to talk about what these decisions might mean to them. We've been asking employers, we've been asking leaders, we've been asking youth and highlighting their stories. And so all of this is available on our website, and if you're interested, I'd just encourage you to look at it. And so again, this is just in another format, our future schedule. I want to highlight our appreciation of the support the City of Portland has given us so far in terms of our collaborative partnership. We've been working as Metro to manage the collective resources, not just from the City of Portland, but from Washington County, Tigard, Tuolleton, Sherwood. It has also contributed funds, so has Durham, and Trimet and ODOT. You know, so we're all in this effort together, and I want to highlight that we really appreciate it, and we're trying to manage our resources wisely. And we look forward to moving forward, we look forward to improving the opportunities for residents to really have more options for moving around and living, working, and playing in the Southwest Corridor. So with that, I think it's Neil's turn.
Bob, could you stay at the dais, because I'm going to have a question for you after Neil. Welcome, Neil.
Well, thank you very much. Council President Fish, members of the Commissioners, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here to discuss what I think is a very important project for the region. We are talking about fulfilling a promise and meeting a need. As mentioned, the Southwest Corridor is the last major radial project envisioned nearly 40 years ago. It connects Southwest area and communities with downtown Portland, reinforcing our land use vision, and gives us a positive alternative to an area that has just about as much traffic today as it can handle, yet growth is continuing. As former Tigard Mayor and co-chair of the Steering Committee, current Metro Councillor Craig Dirksen, will often say, it's the Southwest Corridor's turn. To stay economically viable and vigorous alternatives to the current traffic congestion is absolutely required, and congestion is clearly coming to the forefront of our region's concerns. So let me talk a little bit about the promise. This line obviously connects Tigard, Tuolleton, Southwest Portland to downtown Portland, which is, you think about downtown Portland, it is the state's largest transit-oriented development. And it's been so successful, and I think it is incredibly successful, because 40 years ago, we had a vision of serving this downtown area with excellent public transit. And currently, we provide about 45% of the commute trips into the downtown area, allowing it to grow and prosper. So if you think about this, this is the last, try this analogy on, pedal on the flower of light rail for our region. So how does it meet the need?
I think we may have to go back to the drawing board on that one.
Smoke in the wheel.
My colleagues, Neil, it's a good effort, but I think we're going to have to...
I didn't want to use the spoke thing again. Now, let's come back to it.
The last pedal usually falls off.
How does it meet that need? Well, 400,000 people, as Commissioner Novick noted, are coming to the region in the next 20 years. Some of them think that's a conservative estimate. We have never built these lines for today. We always build them for the future. And it is why this community has stayed ahead of the curve in terms of transportation for all these last year, 30, 40 years of increased growth. And I want to be really candid, that this is a hard project, and it's an expensive project. But to some extent, they all have been hard and expensive. But can we imagine the city today and the downtown without the investments we've made in the past? And as we think where we'll be in 20 years, I think we'd all want to be in a position where we say, we did invest in this last spoke or last pedal, and we were proud of that investment, as opposed to saying, it was just too hard, and we didn't want to take it on. And as a Southwest Corridor resident myself, I think I can be a little provincial about this and say, what's in it for the City of Portland? Well, directly, we'll rebuild Barber Boulevard, which some people, some of my neighbors, would call taming the beast. It will have sidewalks, bike lanes, and help meet the city's objectives for the Barber Concept Plan, as Joe eloquently outlined, providing some really amazing sites for housing. We also understand that the Southwest Corridor neighborhoods have a general lack of sidewalks and bike lanes, as Malu noted, and it makes it difficult for people to get to transit, to get to shopping, to get to schools, to get to the things that they need to do to run their daily lives. And so this project, I believe, is an essential element of bringing that infrastructure up to another level of success for the residents in the area. And just a final note, Metro has forecasted that more people would be likely to board the Southwest Corridor train in 2035 than live in the city of Lake Oswego today. So this is a major investment in the corridor travel and the economic viability of the whole Southwest sector of our region and of your city. So I urge your support for this and to join in leveraging the contributions that have come from ODOT, Washington County, Trimet, Metro, Tigard, Durham, and Tuolleton. And with that, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have some questions. Dan?
I appreciate this presentation. I'm very excited about the prospects of high-capacity transit in the Barber Corridor, as you know. I guess I want to just drill down a little bit on what we're talking about, being more intentional about making sure affordable housing is constructed in this new corridor. So I mean, Trimet, typically when you build lines, you do purchase lots of property. And I guess I'm curious how we're going to integrate properties you acquire with redevelopment potential for affordable housing. And is that a, and is affordable housing development a strategy that is discussed in the draft environmental impact statement? I mean, I guess, I would argue it should be. I don't know what the current rules are in EIS, is what's in the scoping and what's not, but I guess we could always be different and try to be upfront and address this issue from the very outset, I would argue.
Commissioner, thank you very much for that question, because I think it is sort of, as we have all become much more aware of the growth and the pressures on our housing stock in the city and the region, I think we have to put this on the forefront of all of our thinking in everything we do. I agree with that. And an example of our past strategy, which I would contend we need to grow, maybe put on steroids, if you will, is that we have at times acquired opportunity parcels for construction staging, and then have turned those parcels over into opportunities for housing development. When we started light rail construction, that was largely to demonstrate transit-oriented development. Well, candidly, we don't need to do that now. The goal of these same sorts of strategies will be affordable housing. And I can give you two examples along the current alignments where we're working to do that right now. There are many more, but one is up at our site at Argyle, just sort of a kitted corner from Paul Bunyan and the Kenton neighborhood. We've been working with the Housing Bureau, as you know, and Portland Development Commission, on a site which is the northwest corner of Argyle and Interstate. And we will be integrating affordable housing into a proposal that will be hitting the streets here shortly, a request for proposal that will be hitting the streets here shortly. And again, that's a partnership with the city agencies, as well as Trimet writing down property in order to achieve that outcome. Similarly, we have another parcel that's at 18th and Salmon, across the street from, if you will, the Mac Club in the vicinity of the Civic Stadium. I'm not using the correct, thank you. Providence Park. And again, we're working with your staff and others, and our intention is to include inclusionary zoning provisions as we offer that parcel as well, so that we'll make sure that we are frankly responsive to that current request. And again, I think that those are examples. I think that when we begin to look at this, and it will be actually part of the DEIS, the consideration of housing strategies, equity strategies, we're much stronger in that regard than I think we have been historically, and they will be in the forefront of this work.
These will be, I appreciate your examples, and I know Trimet's got great intentions on redeveloping property it's purchased, including for affordable housing. So affordable housing strategy and relative impacts of options will be looked at in the draft environmental impact statement.
Yes. So Commissioner, if I can just add to that, Metro also in two, you know, as we'll be embarking on the environmental impact statement, we also are looking to both apply the work that we're doing on the equitable housing program in the Southwest Corridor. And so we have staff who are available to help do that. And we're also hoping we have another round of community planning and development grants that are upcoming, that are housing-focused, and we see a real opportunity to align some of that with the Southwest Corridor effort. So we are looking to be sure that there's as much as possible of an alignment between the work that we're undertaking to invest in transportation, to bring along the housing component with it. So yes, it will be part of the EIS.
And Malu has a lot to report there, but another program in her department is the Transit Oriented Development Program. It's a modest effort when viewed from a regional scale, but Metro's able to invest up to $500,000 per project for development proposals in transit-oriented development locations, such as station areas, that will deliver transit benefits. And the team at Metro has recalibrated with the Federal Transit Administration's approval the criteria we use, so they now look at affordability as one of the additional opportunities for adding ridership, so that more units can be incentivized to be affordable. And we look forward to working with the city's tools in that area as well.
Can I follow up on something Dan just mentioned? So I make a bold prediction that the four people that you see up here today will be sitting here when we take up the locally preferred alternative. So, and I think increasingly, the council is of a mind to put conditions on dollars that go into projects. And I'm going to direct this question to Bob, because I have no doubt that people of goodwill can be opportunistic in looking for options along the route. But I think what this council is likely to say is, we want to actually have hard numbers, goals, and we want to have, make sure all of our tools are put to the service of accomplishing those goals. Bob, in addition to tag-teaming with Sam Chason, being the champions for affordable housing at Metro, you're a former planning director. So you have a breadth of experience on this, and I think one of the things that we would benefit from as this process matures is what are the prescriptive things that we need to start baking into every funding allocation that we make, where we're being intentional about our values and we are being clear about what the goals are? And my guess is that even though the locally preferred alternative discussion is a couple years down the road, that a lot of real estate speculation is already occurring in anticipation of where that line might go. So the window is narrowing, in a sense. And so what we'll be looking for is some guidance as to what conditions we can put on our funding component of this project, because obviously the council is very supportive of this project, that ensures that we meet measurable goals on affordable housing, not just good intentions. Any feedback?
Sure. Well, first, as Joe pointed out during his remarks to council, Portland's staff, both through the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, PBOT, and housing, and PDC, have been leaders in the Powell Division Corridor work. The Portland Action Plan is a plan, among other things, for housing affordability. And what I would not counter, but suggest in addition to your remarks about conditions, is a sense of partnership around that. The city has been given, along with other cities and counties in Oregon, a tool that has long been denied, which is inclusionary zoning, as an opportunity to require, with appropriate incentives for the private developer, the provision of up to 20% of the units in a market-rate building for affordable tenants or affordable buyers. That requires some investment by the city, but it's a pattern that ought to be considered wherever we're making significant investments in transit, as well as areas that are already demonstrating market strength that merits imposition of those conditions in a thoughtful way. And I know that Commissioner Saltzman is leading that effort to take the inclusionary zoning opportunity and the ability to adopt a construction excise tax to help fund some of those incentives and otherwise provide for affordable housing. and otherwise provide for affordable housing. In the sessions, actions last session, the legislature neglected or failed to include Metro among the governmental levels that can exercise that excise tax. So we won't be able to assist financially, at least until after the 2017 session, if we have another bite at that apple, because we believe that there's an opportunity to have a region-wide construction excise tax approach, as opposed to only in those willing communities that are ready to exercise the tool. So that's one commitment I think we can make going forward, keep working as a partner.
And I love the idea of partnership. Let's take the model, though, of urban renewal, where we've had some hits and some misses. We have been, at least, intentional about setting the aspirational goals. And can we take the same thinking to this project, where we look at the length and breadth of the line, and we set some goals for the mix of housing, the number of houses, that are affordable, and then look to see how, through prescriptive measures, like perhaps Trimet deciding that no land that it owns will be developed without an inclusionary housing component, or first choice going to affordable housing development, the way you've done on Interstate a couple of occasions to great success, or those kinds of things? Do we need to have those policies up front to sort of keep us on track down the road to make sure we get the outcomes we want?
So Commissioner, I think that's a really good point. I like the way that you're thinking about it, and I believe that we will be able to identify what those policies and goals and tools should be through the station area planning work that we do as we move through an environmental impact statement. And then I think your staff will be able to have worked through that process to identify what types of metrics you want to put at the time of an LPA. So I think that we will, the work that we'll be doing through the next two-year process will end up with what you're looking for.
How will the community be involved in things like deciding about the tunnel to PCC and then ongoing? How will you include the work that's already been done in some of Portland's neighborhoods and others?
So Commissioner Fritz, the work that, all of the input that the community has been providing and will continue to be providing up until the time that the Steering Committee considers action on whether or not to further study the PCC Sylvania Tunnel on May 9th, all of that will be provided to the Steering Committee members. We'll have a public engagement report that we will provide to the Steering Committee a week before the Steering Committee meeting, but we have been trying to, all along, keep, provide the information that we're hearing from the public and the feedback that we're hearing from the public on our website and with updates that go out to our, I think we have an over 900-person interested parties list. So we send out information in that way. So we both share it with the Steering Committee members, we share it back to those who are interested in the project, and we try to provide it on our website. So that, all of that will be available for the Steering Committee members as they are asked to consider.
We've also had, like, online surveys that thousands of people have participated in.
Right, I understand that. I'm wondering how you sort the input from transit writers who either use PCC or live in the neighborhood south of Barber. If you've got all of that input, how do you get the piece from those who would or would not use transit south of Barber?
We've tried to break, we don't always have all of the information in every way that we would like to sort it. We have, we've done focus groups within coordination with Portland Community College and with the staff from the city, for both students who attend the Sylvania campus, for faculty and staff who go to the Sylvania campus. And then we've also worked with the neighborhood associations, and, you know, that are all, there are a number that are around the Portland Community College Sylvania campus, and a number of them have done their own surveys. And so we have that information as well.
Yeah, I noted that you had the West Portland Parks survey. I didn't see one from far southwest.
We have that.
Oh, good. And how about ongoing input from southwest neighborhoods, and how is that going to be incorporated into the planning?
As the commissioner will remember, there's a component of our intergovernmental agreement that ensures that Sweeney and the neighborhood associations that are part of Sweeney will receive adequate time from the announcement of a proposal until a decision on that proposal for review internally and then among and between the neighborhoods under the aegis of Sweeney, so that in those cases where there's strong agreement on one or another outcome, that agreement can be expressed as a formal position of the neighborhoods in Sweeney. And when there isn't, we have the benefit of the contrasting views. And just as recently as our last meeting earlier this month, we heard a presentation by staff of the recommendations for the next narrowing of options. We received them, took no action, had a public hearing, and then we had a one-hour forum, because we're not going to make a decision for another month. We're not on an express train here. We're on a train of deliberation that respects and acknowledges the import role of the citizens in the corridor.
Thank you, I did remember that. I just wanted you to say it on the record.
Thank you. I remember it, too.
As the only decision-maker on the city council who lives in the neighborhood near PCC Sylvania, I'd like to give you my input, as somebody who's responsible for balancing many different aspects of the budget. I don't think it's cost-effective to do the tunnel, and that if we could just please Mr. McCrally and have the 44 bus run a little more often, that would be very helpful.
He's working on both those options.
We have service improvements coming this next year.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to raise the pressure on Neil, but depending on the outcome of the mayor's race, there could be as many as four members of this body that will be using this line to commute to work, so it'd be quite unprecedented.
Well, I just, I wanted to comment on that, Commissioner, because Commissioner Saltzman, how long have you been on the council?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years. So there's now three of us who live in southwest, and we've done an appalling job of bringing home the pork to southwest. You mentioned it's southwest turn. It's the last turn, it's the last smoke of the wheel to be done, and rightly so, because other areas of the city needed it more. But when you look at the photograph that Malu showed of the elderly couple in the dirt along Barber, I was smiled to see the picture of the young man at the bus shelter. There's very few bus shelters anywhere near there. So I appreciate the attention to this, and I think for those who say that district representation is better, the three of us who currently live in southwest would be tossed if we were being judged on how much benefit we've brought to our area.
I object.
So I would thank you for your patience in that regard.
We have seven people who signed up to testify. We may lose one or more of you. Neil, can I just say before you go, heartfelt thank you for the orange line to look and crossing. And I live in northeast Portland, and I've discovered a bike route on the weekends that takes me down to the river, back and forth across the bridge, out the Spring Water Corridor, back through Brooklyn and the magnificent bike infrastructure along the orange line, and then home. And it really is, it's a magnificent piece of engineering and execution, and the city is very proud of what you've done, but you probably don't hear that enough, so I just want to thank you for the great work you've done.
Well, thank you very much. And again, the city's been a great partner in all of this, so you should.
Teresa Boyle smiling at that.
Teresa's on the back as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla, we have seven people signed up. We also have another Time Certain backed up, so we're going to invite everyone to come forward. You'll have two minutes, and we welcome your testimony, Carla.
We have a substitute on this, Commissioner, did you want to?
Want to offer a substitute, Steve?
Carla says you have a substitute, Commissioner. You have a substitute?
I must have a substitute.
All right, second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, and Carla, please call the roll.
Maybe, could Teresa maybe tell us what the substitute is, or just?
We originally pulled the paperwork back to add some language at the request of Sweeney, language that I had omitted because it was the second time around, and I felt things were clear, and they wanted clarification that way. I also got some feedback that my explanation of the financials could be fine-tuned a little bit, so we fine-tuned it.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Well, so we will not take a vote on the substitute. It is on the table. We'll take testimony on the substitute, and then we'll take a vote. Carla, please call up the first four.
I seconded the substitute.
The first four are Charles Johnson, Mary Kyle McCurdy, Sheila Greenlaw Fink, and David Davis.
Welcome, everybody. And Mr. Johnson, if you could kick us off.
Certainly. Thank you, President Fish. It was good that you were able to go even into the depths of Commissioner Saltzman's 18 years of experience on this body, because I think some of us that don't live in the southwest are always a little concerned as eastsiders or whatever. It's not fair, it's not fair, always southwest. So it's good to know that, and having ridden, whatever, the bus down Barber, obviously there's room for work here. I also want to thank Commissioner Saltzman for asking if the EIS is scoped to include housing and affordable housing. After having the public comment earlier where we learned about some of the failures in our community to do the right thing in partnership with Legacy Emanuel, it would be great if we can, not just on this project, but on all projects, try and pressure for state and federal issues that include scoping for affordable housing. When we talk about transit, sometimes we talk about automobile reduction, and it gets us in an awkward position. There are going to be people living in the city of Portland. We don't know how many of the people coming will be these people, but already in Portland we have tens of thousands of people for who a car is not really a financially feasible option. And yet, we want to use transit to dissuade even more and more, to persuade people to not have cars. So we need to definitely have, try and get clear language about how we're going to make sure that low-income people don't get displaced from access to transit. We try, as we have wealthy Californians coming in who may or may not have cars, but will give up their car if they can have their $2 million condo walk out the front door to transit. Some people say rich people don't like transit access. I think we're seeing a changing type of migration. So I hope this intergovernmental agreement can be diligently finessed by yourselves and your successors to get those improvements in southwest. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Good morning, Council President Fish and members of the commission. My name is Mary Kyle McCurdy, Policy Director and Staff Attorney at 1,000 Friends of Oregon. The Southwest Corridor will cause a significant investment into a defined geographic area of much-needed transit and other active transportation improvements, and that offers both a challenge and an opportunity. The challenge, as we've seen locally and nationally, is that this type of investment almost always causes significant involuntary displacement of residents and businesses. But the opportunity is the funding and partnerships in this corridor for a successful project that has the opportunity to do it right this time, investing in communities as well as the transportation facilities. The remarks we heard earlier today about the failure of the promises of Emanuel Hospital heightened the need for the city council to provide direction to appropriate city bureaus. That as part of the IGA and draft environmental impact statement, there will be a plan, funding, and implementation strategy to maintain and increase affordable and diverse housing opportunities in the corridor with safe access to the facility, and similar economic development plan that focuses on growing local businesses and employment opportunities, again, as part of this project. There are many strategies and resources to do this, and we'd be happy to work further with your staff and Metro and others on this. Some examples include implementation of the anti-displacement measures that are now moving through city council, aggressive use of the inclusionary zoning authority the city has after Senate Bill 1533, especially in transit-oriented developments, and especially to push it below the 80% area meeting income that you were limited to by that bill. Ongoing throughout the time of the project and throughout the entire corridor, intensive community engagement and focus groups, community benefit agreements, and community land trusts, especially, as was talked about earlier, on land that's acquired for construction purposes. These can be used for community and housing needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sheila, welcome.
Sheila Greenlaw Fink, I also live in southwest Portland.
Press the button at the base.
Sheila Greenlaw Fink, I reside at 628 Southwest Chestnut in southwest Portland, a few blocks from potential stops on the new line. But I'm more interested in the development and have been over the last several years working with Metro and all the local jurisdictions in planning for the line because of the concern I have for an equitable community, including affordable housing for folks that live and work in southwest Portland, southeastern Washington County. Having participated in a number of probably half a dozen different groups, including Metro ID Southwest with Commissioner Novick and others, the Metro Planning Housing Land Use Groups, Tigerd Station Planning, Tigerd Triangle, and having co-chaired the Hillsdale Neighborhood Association during this really exciting period, I want to commend staff at all the jurisdictions who've been so actively involved. We never had a negative response when we asked, which was constantly for folks to come out and give us updates. So it's been, I think, a good amount of stakeholder outreach, and that'll need to continue. So not to repeat what you have already asked of Metro and what other folks have asked you for, we just hope that as you develop, go through the environmental impact statement process and really start on this line, that affordable housing, we do set really tangible targets. I don't think 30% to 50% would be out of line, just as it is in TIF districts. It will take resources to get there, and those have been spoken of. We have some new opportunities with inclusionary zoning. I look forward to seeing the kickoff of that in Portland on Tuesday, and I hope that we can, in Washington County, have some of the jurisdictions follow suit. As usual, you may be taking the lead and pushing some of those new tools into practice, and we really appreciate that. So just to reiterate, a lot of new tools will need to come to bear, and we look forward to working with you in a variety of ways as community stakeholders and as affordable housing developers. Ruth Adkins couldn't be here from the Oregon Opportunity Network today, but I think she would have echoed the same comments. Inclusionary zoning, set a tangible target, and let us help you get there. Thank you.
Carla, could you please call the remaining people up?
The last three are Monty Siliman, Steve Plambeck, and Mary Ann Fitzgerald.
Mary Ann, it looks like you've got the table to yourself. Welcome.
Is there any more? Well, I was late because of that legendary traffic today, but I did provide written comments to try to be brief about this. Southwest Neighborhoods has been engaged in this plan for over five years. We've submitted letters over and over again, and we consistently recommend that this plan improve access to job services and educational opportunities, enhance safety for all transportation modes, improve pedestrian, bicycle, and transit infrastructure, and preserve and enhance livability in our neighborhoods. We did meet with staff this spring to review progress on the plan and the language in the draft IGA with Metro. The dialogue that we had resulted in changes that resolved the issues that we raised this spring. We appreciate the language, such as the ordinance section two, that the Southwest Corridor HCT Plan emphasized and respect the community's land use vision as reflected in the Barber Concept Plan and other adopted area and neighborhood plans. The land use vision is very important to us, and we, I should note that I haven't heard too much pushback about density on Barber. I know you've heard from several neighbors about density, but Barber seems to be the appropriate place for this type of housing. We really appreciate the efforts of staff to communicate with Sweeney and neighborhood representatives as this project approaches key decisions in developing the preferred alternatives that will be further studied in the draft environmental impact phase. We particularly commend city staff Erica Nebel and Teresa Boyle and metro staff Chris Ford for their responsiveness to our concerns. We know that a lot of additional work is needed to design the system and select critical transportation projects in the shared investment strategy that are needed to access stations and key destinations, particularly because of the legendary lack of sidewalks and bicycle infrastructure and lack of transit in our neighborhoods and along Barber. Sweeney intends to stay fully engaged in this process. We look forward to the day when this high-capacity transit system enhances transit access to key destinations in Southwest Corridor, and we want to thank you and thanks staff for listening and responding to our concerns.
Mary Ann, thank you. Lightning, welcome.
Yes, my name is Lightning, and I represent Lightning Watchdog Media PDX. One of the concerns I always have on some of these large transportation projects when we're getting into the billions of dollars is that I want to have more of an emphasis, and I think, I do commend Commissioner Saltzman again for emphasizing affordable housing, utilizing inclusionary zoning. But one of the things I think we really miss on some of these larger projects is that we have to have an understanding that, using an example of Nike, that they have a tremendous amount of employees that are working downtown. And when we provide this type of infrastructure, we have to stress to some of these larger corporations that there is a responsibility for you to develop workforce housing. It's one thing to create jobs, it's another thing to utilize the current housing market out there for your employees, but it's another thing to start planning in the future and understanding that if you don't start investing in the affordable housing, we're going to have some very serious problems on being able to provide housing for the overall market. And when these opportunities are presented, now is the time for these larger corporations to step up and understand that these are great opportunities also to invest along these type of transportation lines and systems here. And under- type of transportation lines and systems here, and understand that when you're building more workforce housing, affordable housing, that also takes the real stress away from the city of Portland on trying to provide housing within the overall market. So now is the time to step up and understand that we can't continue to go in the same direction, and we need your assistance to step up and start investing in these type of projects in affordable housing along these systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Lightning. Steve, I guess what we're going to do now is take a vote on the substitute, and then this would go to a second reading next week. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Colleagues?
Yes, President Fisher. I have one quick question for Joe Zender, if I may.
Joe, can you come forward?
Thank you. Could you just remind the Council and the community what we're doing, what you're proposing to do with the zoning around the Barber Corridor and the West Portland Town Center in the comprehensive plan?
You know, Eric, if I could ask you to come up.
Oh, Eric's here, too.
Eric knows more specifically.
And I just meant in general, not specifically.
We're moving in the direction of it being a center as it was designated.
Hi, good morning. Eric Kingston with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. The corridor in general has been designated as a civic corridor in the comprehensive plan, which allows us to have the full range of mixed-use zoning densities available within the plan. The starting zoning is still under discussion at the Playing in Sustainability Commission, so there's a choice to be made as to whether we, the timing of when that zoning change occurs, but it would be possible to use the denser CM3 mixed-use zoning at some of the more important nodes. It's just a matter of when we decide that that's appropriate.
And the West Portland Town Center?
Including the West Portland Town Center and the area near the Fred Meyer area, as well as kind of that middle section. And then, of course, we have the campus designation at PCC.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have a substitute on the table. Carla, would you please call the roll?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to revisit the Southwest Corridor, and it's
really exciting, as I said, and I hope that we all marshal our forces together, the city and Metro and TRIMED and the other cities that are participating in this group, to really, you know, seize this opportunity to integrate affordable housing opportunities at the outset and to make it more intentional. And so, this is great. I'm very excited about it and pleased to vote aye.
Really appreciate the engagement of my colleagues on this issue, really appreciate
our partners coming here on what was really sort of a ministerial action, but an opportunity to talk again about the importance of this project and our goals for it. So, thank you. Aye.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Novick, for you and your staff taking more time to refine the proposal since the one early this year. Thank you to Mary Ann Fitzgerald and Southwest Neighborhoods for your ongoing engagement, indeed to all of the staff and our community partners. It is indeed Southwest's turn, finally, and it should be noted that it's the last turn. It's the last spoken, and that if we did have district representation, you know, Commissioner Saltzman's been on the council for 18 years, I for seven, and Commissioner Novick for three. For those who worry that we somehow don't represent the entire city of Portland, I need to note that this is the last one, that I have allocated $36 million to East Portland Parks since I've been Parks Commissioner, a fraction of that in Southwest and elsewhere around the city, too. So, I personally believe that the commission form of government makes us all responsible for a wide range of decisions, and that's a good thing for our community. I also appreciate the concerns that have been raised about affordable housing. My neighborhood, West Portland Park, has a significant amount of Section 8 housing. It has the only Title I school on the west side. We're looking for where there's a significant proportion of the children having free and reduced lunch, and so I want to make sure personally, as well as professionally, that as we develop this plan, that we continue to keep a mixed-income neighborhood that is cherished in Southwest. It's regretful that we sold off the Fire Bureau property on Barber under Commissioner Leonard, and I know that probably will want to buy it back, and it'll cost us more, but it's, at that point, we weren't sure that this project was going to be able to move forward, and now we are, and so we do need to be looking mindfully about what acquisitions do we need to make. And I appreciated the discussion of the construction staging and the need for that, and then let's make sure that the public benefits from the significant public investment. And again, I don't believe that should include the tunnel to PCC. Just because of the return on that investment doesn't, to me, pencil out. The rest of the project is really exciting. I would like, I'm kind of disappointed that we're currently going to be finishing at Bridge Fort Village. I know, I hope that eventually it will go further out and serve more people, because when I get on a MAX train at rush hour and they're packed, and I'm thinking that one operator is getting all those people safely home, I really appreciate the system that we've built together. Thank you very much. Aye.
Fish. Thanks for a great presentation. I'm going to vote aye, and this matter moves to a second reading next week. Thank you all. Carla, we have a second time certen, and I think we've set something of a record today because we're actually within about 15 minutes of the time that it's set for. So, would you please call, would you please read item number 382?
Acknowledge the engineering contributions of the professional and technical employees, Local 17, and create the City of Portland Professional Employees Association Value Capture Program to leverage funding for design and construction of transportation and stormwater infrastructure.
Thank you, and I'm about to acknowledge and introduce Commissioner Novick, but for those of you who are here for other items, following this item, we'll go to 384, which is on, has been lifted from the consent, and then we'll move to our regular agenda. Commissioner Novick.
Thank you, President Fish. Colleagues, on this item, I know that we circulated a substitute amendment. This substitute makes changes to the resolution to add a new provision suggested by Commissioner Fritz requiring an annual report about LIDs. The substitute also makes changes to address issues raised by the Chief Financial Officer and the City Budget Office. These changes add important clarity as to how the incremental property tax revenue will be calculated. There's also a change to clarify and ensure the council will consider appropriations from LIDs for value capture revenue during the normal budget process each year. Carla has copies of the substitute. I ask for a second.
Second.
Thank you. So, the purpose of this resolution is to acknowledge the contributions of our friends at Copia, and also to bring forward a proposal that they've been talking about and refining over the last couple of years. We all know that there are lots of places in the city where we have unimproved streets. We have, you know, no street at all, or we have a street without a curb. We know that we have these things called LIDs, which we approve periodically, but not very often. What Copia suggested is that we establish a program where we look at the additional property tax revenue that is generated by the value of property being enhanced by the LIDs that do exist, and then the council could look at that and, in the annual budget process, decide we are going to take this value capture, you know, we are going to take this value generated by prior LID improvements and use it to help supplement what local property owners are able to come up with in future LIDs in order to ensure that more LIDs actually happen. It's definitely very much a pay-it-forward concept. So, we have two panels to present on this item. First, Amy Bowles from Copia, Steve Townsend from PBOT, and economist Mark Delacy will provide an overview.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Novick, for those introductory remarks, and thank you, Council, for the opportunity to present today. First, I would like to start off with a few comments. As Commissioner Novick indicated, my name is Amy Bowles. I am with PTE Local 17, Professional and Technical Employees Local 17, and I'm here today on behalf of Copia, City of Portland Professional Employees Association, specifically the Copia chapter of PTE 17. And I am proud to be here and proud to present this resolution on behalf of the hard work of our Copia chapter members at PBOT and across the city. This resolution and this project proposal was really the brainchild of John Wood in close collaboration with Ruth Ann Bennett. Both of those folks are PBOT employees or former PBOT employees. John Wood is recently retired and actually present in the audience with us today, and Ruth Ann Bennett will later be addressing council in public testimony remarks. John Wood and also Ruth Ann Bennett both noticed a pattern of development opportunities that others hadn't seen, and they noticed this throughout their experience working through PBOT and on all the engineering projects that they work on. John and Ruth Ann are two engineers at PBOT who have really exemplified the contributions of Copia employees at the city, specifically within their bureau at PBOT. Our members are proud to be city employees and consistently provide quality infrastructure work, and the engineers at PBOT solve intractable engineering problems that add incredible value to the city, to infrastructure, and also to the bureau specifically. And the projects that they work on are not easy, and it's really fantastic that we have these incredible resources in-house within the bureau at PBOT. Later, Steve Townsend will highlight some of the innovative and highly technical projects that I've referenced, and for now, we will move on to the first slide, and do you all have the PowerPoint present in front of you? Okay, great. So, the LID project proposal, we have been working on for approximately the last two years, and on this first slide, we'd like to show a 15-year snapshot of LIDs as just one option to build infrastructure within the city of Portland. This program, as we've mentioned, has been in collaboration with Copia, and Copia has closely been involved in and worked with LIDs since the function centralized in PBOT in 2000. The LID process used to be scattered in multiple city bureaus and in multiple places in the code, and there was a question whether LIDs and engineering solutions would even be viable moving forward. LID program works with property owners and on project financing, and Copia employs engineering expertise. Copia has designed most of the 35 LIDs formed since 2000. Despite the lack of new funding sources such as value capture and past funding sources such as CDBG block grant funding and PDC urban renewal funds, we've been able to whittle away at the backlog of unpaved streets over the past 15 years by about 7.2% due to these LIDs, and our Copia colleagues who handle permit engineering have helped as well. The figures above on the slide show the differential that would exist in the absence of LIDs, and block by block, we continue to reduce that backlog. But to be clear, LIDs are not the only tool available. And now, I will turn it over to Steve Townsend.
My name is Steve Townsend. I'm the city engineer, chief engineer of transportation. I've been in the position about for 10 years, and so over the years, I've had a great opportunity to see some of the projects that the Copia staff have worked on, particularly on these LIDs. And if you take a look at the slide that Amy's putting up here, the issue of how to pay for streets, how to improve streets, has been around for a long time. I mean, as you can see, these slides are going back over 100 years, so this is not a new situation the city's faced. And one of the things about it is with the LIDs, a lot of things we've been able to attack has been the unimproved streets. And mostly unimproved streets are there because all of the easy projects were already done sometime in the past. But fortunately, our engineering expertise has greatly increased over the last century, and we've got ways to try to address some of these. As engineers, we design projects to last and to minimize lifecycle costs, recognizing that today's maintenance dollars are quite limited, as you are well aware. We design streets so they are not a financial burden on the next generation, and while learning from history, we try new things in the spirit of continuous improvements. These infill or retrofit-type projects are the most difficult. They are much more difficult than just having a green field to go do work on. And I have a few slides to kind of show you some of the projects that the Copia members have worked on and their accomplishments. For those of you in Southwest, because I heard, I know Amanda and Steve, you guys live in that area, if you guys are familiar with Southwest Texas, this is a huge accomplishment out there. It was a very steep, unimproved street out there. When I first came to the city, I worked in environmental services, doing the design of the storm sewer, the storm improvements, and I thought this project would never be built. It's at the headwaters of Stevens Creek, and with it, BES was also doing a bunch of work along Stevens Creek in that, in the drainage area. And with this project being built and the other projects that BES also did, and this one being right at the headwaters of Stevens Creek, they are now salmon in a portion of Stevens Creek in Southwest Portland that were not there today, and this project would be part of that improvement to help make that happen. Our next slide, Northeast Alberta. Here's a second example of a project that Copia staff worked on. Now, this giant puddle is no longer blocks access to bicyclists, pedestrians, and motorists in the underserved Cully neighborhood. In addition, it also provided an opportunity to mentor an underrepresented employee who is an engineering intern who has used this opportunity to go on and have a great career after getting her start at the city of Portland. And now, here's a photo just a block away showing how the street's been improved since that time. And our next slide, the third project is at Southeast 119th and Pine, which is just a short walk from the MAX line. This intersection still looked this way 16 years after light rail started opening on the Blue Line in Gresham in 1986. Despite the proximity to transit, market failure prevented this area from developing until the city stepped in with an LID and some funding to make these street improvements possible. Do you want to go to the next slide? So, this is what it looks like today, or during construction. And before I hand this off to Bart, I just want to talk about, as the city engineer, this is one of the, I think this is a great opportunity to try to capture some of these revenues and address the 55 miles of unpaved streets that has been an issue since, for the last 10 years that I've been the city engineer. I know, Commissioner Saltzman, you've seen it for 18 years, probably.
Keep picking on Dan's 18 years here.
This brought it up earlier. But anyway, this would just be a tool to try to have some seed money to be able to try to address these streets. And so, with that, I'd like to go ahead and hand this off to Bart Delacy, who's going to expand on the concept of market failure and also value capture.
Welcome, Barton. When's the last time you came before council?
1995, I believe.
Wow.
I was to discuss a city parking policies, but...
We're honored that every 20 years, you grace our building with your presence.
Thank you very much. My name is Barton Delacy. I'm a valuation counselor, appraiser, now based in Chicago, but formerly from Portland, Portland's home, and I am here today because one of your valued employees, Andrew Abbey, asked for some help, and a lot of my work is pro bono, and to me, he asked if I could put together a white paper to address the obvious economic benefits of this type of program and to weigh in with some of my experience around the country. And I believe you have a copy of that paper with the ordinance. And I guess my purpose here is to validate the economic soundness of the project and to provide perspective to remind the council that, in fact, under other kinds of names in Chicago, they call it tax increment financing, but in order to, for a city to intervene and improve blight, leveraging the positive impacts of that real estate development, either through tax collections or other mechanisms, is accepted. It's, in fact, a best practice, and to see that adopted here has made obvious, I mean, has made obvious improvements in areas such as 148th and Airport Way, 119th and Pine Street, which Steve was just showing you, that is an area that, in fact, when light rail went out, you would have thought, well, gee, that's why we have light rail, that transit-oriented development might happen here. It didn't. And a market failure is whenever, is a time that the city needs to intervene, so when the city provides affordable housing. It's because the market fails to provide housing for a portion of the population that is underserved. Obviously, when cities build streets and sewers through greenfield areas, that aids and abets development. But what do you do in these pockets that have been left behind? And there's an urgency right now because, in fact, the market in Portland's very hot. You want to do two things. You want to channel that growth and development. At the same time, you don't want to encourage sprawl. So, what better way to do it than to focus that development on the underserved areas, take advantage of a boom in the market? And, you know, frankly, without access, which is what we're really talking about here, if you don't have access to a site, it's not going to get developed. Development favors the prepared mind or the prepared site, you might say. In conclusion, I just want to, it appears to me as a land economist that this, the precept here is unassailable. It's absolutely, it's one of the better ways the city can intervene. It's absolutely, it's one of the better ways the city can intervene, lower the bar for redevelopment in the areas that need it most. And if there are any questions or...
Let me ask a question based on that slide. Thank you for your explanation. And my understanding is this proposal is outside of urban renewal districts, so that's not changing the allocation? And that it doesn't increase the property, doesn't change the property taxes that individual owners pay, it just directs the city to put it in a different place?
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
On the next slide, I'll briefly go over how this program will work. And the goal, as indicated on the slide, is an economically sustainable cycle of public infrastructure and private investments. First, council will approve the Copia value capture resolution, hopefully. Then, the LID administrator will annually track an increase in city tax increment or incremental tax revenue. And this will be done in collaboration with the CFO and the Bureau of Revenue and Financial Services. Calculations will also be validated by the city economist. And a city tax increment from development above 3% will be used for the LIDs, so the only capture will be everything above 3%. Council will approve value capture funding upon the LID formation. All tax increment return to general fund after 20 years. And the city can only capture the city's share itself. Obviously, it can't capture the county's share or anyone else's share. This will be a pay-as-you-go. There will be no borrowing cost. There is no increase in administrative costs. This can all be done in the current confines of the administration in P-Bot. And this will be targeted to R2.5 higher in commercial and industrial zoning areas.
Could you explain why that is? I think it's an important piece.
Yes, that is the areas that have, from what I understand, it's those are the areas that have the greatest opportunity for this value capture and for capturing this investment opportunity.
So, they're most likely to redevelop and then have more property taxes from that?
That's correct.
And we're not, under this proposal, going to be excusing property owners who would otherwise be required to develop a street by themselves. This proposal doesn't change that?
That does not, no.
So, it's just to give a little extra where it makes the difference between fostering the redevelopment and not?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you. And then, our final slide addresses project selection. And as we've previously discussed, there is an annual report to council on LIDs and the value capture program. So, council will be briefed annually on how the last year went and on expectations for the following year. Property owners must have a willingness to participate in the program. They will not be necessarily forced to participate. There's an ability to generate tax increment for the city. In terms of geography, there's 95 neighborhoods, infrastructure deficiency ranking. Equity will be considered, underserved populations. We also believe that this proposal and program will help achieve multiple city objectives, including housing as well as transportation accessibility objectives. Because with this will come the infrastructure for sidewalks and paved streets, et cetera, that will improve accessibility to transit. Proximity to schools will also be considered, as well as parks and transit. Financial need and inability to meet valuation to assessment ratio. And finally, council approves all use of value capture funds in each LID. So, that's definitely a very important point. Council retains discretion. Every LID will come forward before council for a decision by council on whether or not to apply the program to that LID. At this time, that concludes the slideshow. And we have three other presenters who are on, who are included as invited testimony. And also, Andrew Abbey is available to answer any questions we can come forward to.
Thank you very much. Let's welcome up our next three speakers.
Thank you.
Our next three speakers are Monty Sullivan from River View Bank, Joe Westerman, a potential future developer in Gateway, and Bob Roschelt, potential future LID producer in East Portland.
Why don't you come forward, everybody? Who'd like to go first?
I'm standing. I'll go first.
Go ahead, sir. All we need is your name, and you have two minutes.
My name is Joe Westerman, and I am a, I build and manage apartment communities in Portland. I've been doing it for 25 years, mostly in East Portland. First of all, I'd like to thank you for, one of the LIDs you approved, the 97th Avenue Green Street Improvement, that improved the streets, sidewalks, infrastructure along 97th. It, there was a lot there. The designers did a wonderful job of dealing with the utilities because it was set up for sparsely, single-family homes, and now it is set up for apartment development. One of the big benefactors of the LID was the Rose Apartments built by Gordon Jones. Because of the LID, he was able to build a 90-unit apartment building consisting of affordable housing and market rate units there. And after he built that, some good things happened to the neighborhood. First, people in the neighborhood realized that the neighborhood was changing for the better. In East Portland, where the Rose was built, city rezoned that land several years ago for many more housing units. The city had very good vision in rezoning. It's a great place, it's a great place to have more housing, but the infrastructure just isn't there, and that's where the LID is so effective. It started, started the ball rolling with the Rose Apartments. And once the Rose started, I started acquiring houses south of the Rose. And I acquired them, and they were in disrepair. There was a couple drug houses that were closed down. I have rehabilitated them and have rented them and made them safe housing. And now, and this is all because of the LID. Probably the best example of one of the houses was right, it was just south of the Rose Apartments. It was a triplex, complete disrepair. It just didn't look good. Lots of deferred maintenance, and I was able to purchase it. We cleaned up the trashcan area. We have more garbage drops, and we have gone through all the units and have made it very good housing now. And it's, again, the whole area started with the 97th LID. I have since purchased other houses there, and now I have enough land to build 130 units right south of the Rose. My dream is to build 130 affordable housing units and market rate housing of some sort. I have never built...
Thank you, sir. We're going to have to wrap it up.
Okay. I've never built those, but I've talked to Gordon, and I'd like to have a dialogue with the city about this. Thank you so much for the LID.
Well, you have the full attention of the Housing Commissioners.
Great.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
I'm Monty Sullivan, River View Community Bank. I was involved in the projects. I've been involved in projects with Joe before. We financed the Rose Apartments for Gordon Jones and his investors. And I will emphasize again what Joe said. By having the LID, that allowed him to attract the investor partners that he was able to attract to make that project a go. That project was amazing for a lot of reasons. Again, the city getting the LID, the Metro got involved in it, because there was a lot of benefit there. They could not literally build those apartments fast enough. Most, you know, I guess generally speaking, when apartments are built, a bank figures it's going to take about 90 days to get about a 70% occupancy. In less than 30 days, Gordon had 93% occupancy. And the only thing, the only reason he didn't have 100, because you have to go through and qualify people. I mean, they were literally putting paint on the walls and people were moving in. Great project. Revitalized that area. It was a big boon for that area. River View is a very community-conscious lender. We love these kind of projects. We like the cooperation. These kind of projects without the LIDs and without people like Metro getting involved are not feasible. And that Gateway area obviously has need when they grow, you know, it can fill up that fast. So, it worked out real well. I guess that's all I'm going to say. The LID is a wonderful tool, and it's the only way that people like Joe and Gordon can make these things happen.
Thank you very much, sir. Welcome.
My name is Bob Roschelt, and I have...
Hit the button on that, if you would.
Right here?
There you go.
My name is Bob Roschelt. I want to speak on supporting value capture. I think it's a great concept. And I want to add from personal experience, I want to underscore the importance of streets and sidewalks and property development and the tax rate revenue you'll realize from the improvements. In the late '60s, my wife and I built an 18-unit garden court complex on property next to Glen Fair Grade School with frontage on then-developed Northeast Gleason. This frontage on an improved street allowed us to secure the maximum financing needed to construct quality units. We filled these units with families with children and enjoyed the community that developed over several decades, which we refer to our Camelot years. The quality units we were able to finance have continued to increase in value and demand. Mark Berry, a prominent multifamily appraiser, considered them the finest offered on the east side for three decades that I know of. Meanwhile, the adjacent unimproved street deteriorated. The four blocks from northeast Cooch to Gleason now have six houses that need to be replaced, three boarded up drug houses, and three that are occupied at rents that don't support the purchase price needed to, excuse me, to obtain the land. We are committed to improving this street and our neighborhood as opportunities present themselves. Took three months to finance a property adjacent to the southern border of our property because of the deteriorated neighborhood. We had to invest $40,000 in improvements to the house just to achieve a valuable, value acceptable to a bank to secure financing. Yet, we also were required to commit to boarding up a drug house located on the property. Odds are, had street improvements comparable to the surrounding area much further out, existed four decades ago, neighborhood deterioration or development of drug houses may not have occurred. The properties on this street are next to a park and could have been developed with quality residential units or multifamily, preferably. And the increased property tax revenue that would have accrued to the city would have retired the street and sidewalk costs a long time ago.
Thank you very much, sir. Carla, I understand we have one person who signed up to testify?
Yes, Ruth Ann Bennett.
Ruth Ann, would you like to come forward? Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Grab a seat. Welcome. We just need your name, and you have three minutes.
I'm Ruth Ann Bennett. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. As a PTE Local 17, Copia Chapter member, and as a Portland resident, I'm asking you to approve the Copia Value Capture Program. When a street hasn't been built yet, or the sidewalks haven't been built, this can be a huge obstacle for property owners who want to build large additions to their homes or to construct new buildings. Local improvement districts allow multiple property owners to fund the construction of roads, sidewalks, streetlights, utilities, and the planting of street trees. This gives them the opportunity to make major improvements to their properties. The Copia Value Capture Program will capture the city's portion of property tax increases due to property development. This will make it possible to buy down the cost of street, sidewalk, and other frontage improvements for worthwhile local improvement districts approved by city council. We need streets to go to work, go to school, and to do so many other things. Road construction improves access for emergency services. Sidewalk construction makes it easier for kids and seniors to go to school or the bus stop safely. Housing construction that follows street improvements helps to eliminate our housing shortage. So, I'm asking you to take this opportunity to help make our city a better place to live. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Steve, is that the end of your presentation?
It is, Mr. President. I believe that Commissioner Fritz has an amendment to offer, though.
All right. So, we have a substitute that is before the council. Commissioner Fritz has an amendment to the substitute?
I just want to add a further, be it resolved, that the city council commends Ruth Ann Bennett, John Wood, and Andrew Abbey for their innovative work.
Second. So, we now have a substitute, as amended by Commissioner Fritz, without objection, as the amendment. Carla, would you please call the roll on the substitute, then we will vote on the resolution.
Do you want to roll on the amendment?
No, no, just by unanimous consent, we just adopted it.
Okay, thank you. Saltzman?
This is the final vote.
No, we're just, we're adopting the substitute, then voting on the resolution.
Okay. Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye. All right, the substitute is adopted. It will now go to a vote on the resolution. Carla, please call the roll.
Saltzman?
Well, I want to commend Copia, our members, particularly Ruth Ann and John, for thinking outside the box here and coming up with a very innovative idea to tackle that problem that's been around us for a long time, those unpaved streets, and that have been sort of fallen by the wayside and been neglected despite a lot of prosperity in the city. So, I think you've presented us with a great approach that we can not only capture the value here, but make sure that that value gets channeled back into paving more streets and more sidewalks and curves and stormwater improvements, too. Be remiss if I didn't mention that. So, thank you for this great thinking, and I'm very pleased to support it. Aye.
Novick?
I want to thank Copia, especially Ruth Ann Bennett, John Wood, and Amy Bowles for their hard work developing this concept. I want to thank Andrew Abbey for working with them to develop the concept. This program is a great example of how our staff can innovate and improve our service, and we're well advised to listen to them. This particular innovation is what I'm especially interested in because it will increase resources for infrastructure investments. As we've heard today, LIDs are an important tool neighborhoods have for improving the infrastructure they use every single day. By tracking the contribution of these LED investments to increase property values, this program creates the opportunity to reinvest and bring LIDs within the reach of even more neighborhoods. While the amount of the revenue identified by this program is projected to be modest, even a small amount can go a long way. And in all these transportation issues, it's become more clear and clearer that there are no silver bullets, but there are silver buckshot. I vote aye and thank my colleagues for their support.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Novick, for your leadership on this and for taking some of my amendments regarding making sure that we do consider equity in the distribution of the funding. Thank you to Ruth Ann Bennett, John Wood, and Andrew Abbey. I wanted to amend the resolution so that your names are in the record for perpetuity. They are in the documentation of the city council's minutes, but this will make it easier for, in the future, people to know who it was who came up with this really innovative idea, which did not take a penny additional funding to implement this. A lot of hard work on behalf of our valued labor partner to get the details refined. But this is an example of city employees do a lot of really great work that actually benefits way beyond the actual paving of the street, the providing of the sewer, the providing of a park, that results in benefits that then increase property taxes, that then increase the amount of money the council can allocate in partnership with the community to other good works. This is how we build the city. And so, this program quantifies that in a way similar to urban renewal districts. And it doesn't increase property taxes. It increases the property value for the property owner, so it's truly a win all around. There's no downside to this proposal. And I very much appreciate the intention to be very thoughtful about which further properties get the money to continue the pyramid and the snowball effect. So, nice job all around. Well done, and thank you. Aye.
Yeah, it's all been said. I just want to comment that the city has a wonderful partnership with Copia. And Copia's job is to fight like hell for their people they represent at the bargaining table. But the true spirit of partnership is when they help us, and their member help us, do our work better and more efficiently and more effectively. So, we celebrate that partnership. And I, too, was going to offer a friendly amendment, but it would not have been germane to the resolution, which was to encourage Bart DeLacy to return to his place of birth and end this interlude in whatever you said, Chicago or some city to the west, to the east. Steve, congratulations on your leadership. Aye. Resolution passes. Congratulations. So, folks, we have a very important proclamation, which we're about to read, but because something from the consent agenda was pulled by rule, that has to come first, so we'll take that up very quickly, and then we're going to move to the special reading of a proclamation. Carla, would you please read item number 384?
Authorize an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County, Oregon, for the use of U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance...
of U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Federal Fiscal Year 2015, National Sexual Assault Kit Initiative Grant Program Funds for agency personnel and grant program expenses.
So I'm going to recognize Commander George Burke from the Portland Police Bureau Detective Division to give us a very brief overview. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm George Burke, I'm commander of the Detective Division, Portland Police Bureau, and I will be very brief. Back in 2015, we applied for and received a grant from the Department of Justice to test all of our untested sexual assault kits that were in our inventory. As a result of that, or in the process, we asked to include, some of our county partners, to include the district attorney's office as well as the Washington, or the Multnomah County Sheriff's Office, so that we could look at more than just the city of Portland and expand it to the entire county, which has been successful. What we're asking for now is an intergovernmental agreement which will allow us to pay out what has been allocated through the grant process that would go to both the district attorney's office as well as sheriff's office for their participation, assistance, and caring forward with this grant.
Thank you very much. Any questions from my colleagues? Okay, Carla, did anyone sign up to testify in this item?
Didn't have a sign-up sheet, but Mr. Lightning pulled it.
Okay, Lightning, would you like to testify? Okay.
Yes, my name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Watchdog Media, PDx. One of the reasons why I pulled this item is I understand on these kits are going to be tested from a private forensic lab in Salt Lake City, which I agree with that situation. But one of the things I want to put more emphasis on, which I've mentioned on some of my past public communications, is that I want to have a clear understanding that the state forensic labs will also be put at the top of the list, and especially with the forensic scientists having some input on things that they want to have improved in their labs. Now, I understand these grants, the purpose of these grants are for testing the kits, and I do understand that. But we still need to continue the emphasis on the state labs, the OSP state labs, and make sure that these labs are, can run efficiently enough to where we don't create a backlog in the future. And again, I want to have an understanding on some of the procedures from the forensic scientists, that if we test five kits at the state labs, then I would like to have one of those five kits tested again from a private lab as a check and balance to make sure things are done properly. I want to have this implemented, and I also want to see more grants to the state labs for more equipment. The technology changes at a rapid pace. Do we need to lease the equipment, or do we need to buy the equipment? We need to start looking at the overall costs and focus on efficiency at the state labs. And I'd also like Governor Brown to also step up on this and make sure this is taken care of, and we do not create this type of backlog situation ever again. I don't think it should have ever happened. And again, I think we need to be more efficient at the state-run labs, which I think is the direction to go, but also utilizing the private labs as a check and balance on our state lab situation. Thank you.
Lightning, thank you very much. Carla, this is an emergency. Would you call the, it's an emergency item, would you call the roll, please?
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz? Aye.
Fish?
Aye. Thank you very much. We're now moving to the regular agenda. Carla, would you please read item number 389?
Proclaim April 20, 2016 to be a day of remembrance for Hank Miggins in Portland.
So, how many people are here today for this item? If you raise your hand. Hey, that's fantastic. Thank you all for joining us. Would our distinguished speakers please come forward for a moment? Mayor Hale's originally placed this on the agenda. Unfortunately, he is in Europe on official city business. He sends his deep regrets that he could not be here. But it is my pleasure to introduce Commissioner Dan Saltzman, that has a long history with our honoree, and Dan will read the proclamation. Commissioner Saltzman?
Thank you, Mr. President. And it is indeed an honor for me to read this proclamation. I did have a long association with Hank Miggins, I think more so than anybody else on the council. When I was first elected to the county, Board of County Commissioners, I took office in 1993 under the leadership then of Gladys McCoy, the county chair. Unfortunately, Gladys passed three months into my term in office, and her executive assistant, Hank Miggins, became the county chair. And I learned a lot from Hank in the time that he bridged the county chair between Gladys McCoy and ultimately Beverly Stein. And it was also my honor to appoint Hank Miggins to the Citizen Review Committee. He was my representative for the 10 years that he served, so I'm indeed honored to read this proclamation. Whereas in 2001, Mr. Hank Miggins was appointed as one of the nine original Citizen Review Committee members by Portland City Council. And whereas Hank Miggins served on the committee for 10 years and was chair for many years, during his tenure, Hank played a pivotal role in the creation of many of the protocols that allow for the committee to engage in community-directed oversight of the Portland Police Bureau. And whereas Hank Miggins' steady demeanor and strong analytical abilities were in much demand in the committee's eventful early years, where multiple citizen appeals of police misconduct investigations were common. And whereas Hank Miggins provided culturally-aware outreach when engaging with Portland's diverse community to gather feedback about policing. And whereas Hank Miggins was passionate about police oversight and made himself available to mentor committee members and the staff of the Independent Police Review. And whereas Hank Miggins, upon retirement from the committee, continued his service to the city as an advisor to the committee and the Independent Police Review. And whereas Hank Miggins, through his lifelong commitment to accountability, equity, and justice, enriched many lives in our community. His efforts continue to pay dividends. And whereas Hank Miggins' leadership and life of service extended beyond Portland, including his service to our nation for 22 years as an officer in the United States Air Force and as city manager of Spokane, Washington. And whereas Hank Miggins passed away on July 18, 2013, at the age of 78, now therefore, I, Charlie Hales, mayor of the city of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim April 20, 2016, to be a day of remembrance for Hank Miggins in Portland and encourage all residents to observe this day.
Thank you very much, Dan. Let's suspend the rules. Constantine, would you please introduce our distinguished panel?
Thank you. To my right is Brenda Miggins Vaughn, Hank's daughter, and Eric Terrell, a former member of the Citizen Review Committee and a appeal process advisor. And I am Constantine Sevier, Independent Police Review Director. I would like to thank the mayor in his absence and city council for taking the time to remember a great Portlander and, in my opinion, a great American, Hank Miggins. What we do here at the Independent Police Review and the Citizen Review Committee cannot happen without engaged community members, and Hank was the definition of an engaged community member. The early years of the Citizen Review Committee, there were multiple appeals in a month. I believe at least 30 appeals in a year were not uncommon. And Hank stuck it out, and Hank was on the committee for over 10 years. And after he was done on the committee, he served as a community member, and one of the, you know, last interactions that I had with Hank before he passed was about a week or so before he died. He was preparing for a citizen appeal, and he was helping a community member, you know, navigate the process that we have, and that he was so selfless. One impressed me and, I think, impressed anybody that had contact with Hank Miggins. The other part that was so important about what Hank did, and I think it serves an example of community members involved in police accountability, is that there really is no police accountability without engaged community members. And, you know, we talk a lot about oversight and accountability, but accountability starts with the community, and Hank brought the passion of remembering community members as well as being fair to police officers. So I could talk a lot about Hank Miggins. He was someone who was a personal mentor to me, and I felt providing an example to a lot of us in the community, but I'll give it all to his wonderful daughter.
Thank you.
Welcome, and welcome to the city hall.
Thank you. Our family wants to thank you guys for this wonderful honor to our father. Means a lot. Several months before he passed away, I was over at his house and I was telling him about that I had met, that I was talking to a lawyer that I was working with, and he was telling, he asked me, "Are you Hank's daughter?" And I was like, "Yes." And then he proceeded to tell me how great he was and how much he enjoyed him and how much he respected him. And I was telling my dad that, and he was like, "Well, you know, I know a lot of people, and a lot of people know me. I'm kind of important in these parts." I just kissed him on his head, rolled my eyes, and said, "Sure, Dad, I know." But it wasn't until I had to write his obituary that I realized how much he contributed to so many people and so many communities. And I heard that they lowered the flag for him when people came to share their condolences with us. They saw the loss in our eyes, but we saw it in theirs, too. How many people missed him and respected him. Someone came up to me and gave me a calendar of African-American men that contributed to this city, and he was Mr. November, or December. So throughout these last three years, we continue to hear stories. People continue to come up and tell me what a wonderful guy he is and tell us the stories of what they did together and the laughs and just the respect that so many people had for him, that it's overwhelming. And when we got, when I got the call about this, this honoring, the family had to come. As you can see, they all came from Spokane and from California. It's very, very important. What I've learned throughout this time is that, I mean, we knew that he was important, he's our dad, but we saw him from fishing and camping and bowling. He was much more than that. And what I've learned is that he really cared about his community, he cared about the city, and he cared about the people. He believed in truth, justice, and fairness, and he was a great humanitarian. And I really, really appreciate, our family really appreciates the honoring of him and remembering, remembering who he was and remembering his spirit. We just want to say thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Eric Terrell. Excuse me. In 2001, Hank and I became members of the original CRC Gang of Nine, the newly-established Citizen Review Committee. Although we did not know each other, we soon became close colleagues on the committee, and not long after, became close friends. I admired and liked Hank a lot. He was a straight talker and a straight shooter. He was dedicated, focused, and highly principled, and was always well-prepared to take on the challenging, difficult work of the CRC. Although Hank was passionate about what CRC was about, he was never vindictive or mean-spirited in any way toward anyone. He was fair-minded and was there to do a job, and that's what he did, and he did it so well. Hank was respected not only by his fellow CRC members and by the staff of IPR, but I believe was respected by senior staff of the police bureau as well. Another close friend, Mike Hess, now-retired associate director of IPR, has this to offer, quote, "Hank was the only original CRC member who did not resign when things got tough. He embraced the responsibilities of CRC chairmanship during several tumultuous years when no one else was willing to shoulder the burden," unquote. Hank was a true gentleman, and he was an affable, gentle man, yet strong and steady. Most often, he had a warm, inviting smile on his face. And for anyone who wishes to know Hank Miggins better, then you will also need to know that Hank smoked the most fragrant pipe tobacco and wore the jauntyest fedoras. Hank's wonderful, generous spirit lives on to guide us all. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. We have one more speaker who would like to be heard. Dan Handelman, would you come forward, please? And then I'm going to ask the indulgence of our invited guests to congregate for a photograph. For, pardon me? Yes, and comments in the council. Dan?
Good morning, city council and folks in the public. I'm Dan Handelman. I'm here with Portland Cop Watch and with Flying Focus Video Collective. As a member of both groups, I've attended just about every meeting of the Citizen Review Committee since it began. And I told a story to the Portland Tribune that they got a little bit wrong, they fixed it in the online version, where Mr. Miggins and Mike Bigum, who was the chair of CRC at the time, came before city council after a TriMet officer from another jurisdiction was unable to be interviewed for a CRC appeal because the city can't compel officers from other jurisdictions to, even to testify as a witness. And they ended up changing the TriMet contracts so that it is more clear that there has to be some accountability. I think there's still a problem in us having officers from other jurisdictions working in the chain of command for the Portland police and not having to follow Portland rules because their rules may be different. But that was something that he did before. It was even clarified in the ordinance that CRC was allowed to make recommendations directly to the council. So he kind of stuck his neck out beyond a little bit what was written in law to make this point. So that's something that I thought was an important story to tell. We also knew that he was a very good friend of Gary Blackmore, who helped create IPR when it started. In fact, there was a committee that I sat on as a member of Portland Cop Watch that the mayor had appointed to design a new system. The system, as Commissioner Saltzman probably remembers, didn't quite satisfy the expectations of the majority of that group, and there were people from the police association who were worried that it was going too far. And Hank was the only person who testified in favor of the system exactly as it was written when it was first adopted. So I thought that was another interesting story. There was mention that he served as appeals process advisor. He helped make sure that that position was added. It was one of the recommendations from that committee, the original committee, that there should be an advocate for the person going through the system. It's a very confusing system, especially when you've been harmed by the police, you have no idea what's going on. So he helped make it happen. We didn't always see eye to eye, I have to say, that, you know, Hank felt very strongly that it should be, that it should not be an advocate, that it should be somebody explains how the process works. But that, you know, again, he helped make that happen and participated in that. And I think, I also know, I didn't hear it mentioned yet, that Hank was a member of the ACLU Board of Directors. And one thing I never remember ever happening while Hank was a member of CRC or the chair is having decision-making and discussions out of the public eye. Transparency is part of the mission of IPR. I feel like this has been happening on an increasing basis, not only at IPR but elsewhere, ironically, more since the DOJ's come to town. And in fact, I've been asking Director Sevier since Thursday night, where I'm going to be able to put my camera tonight, pointing out that when video cameras are allowed in city council, they're allowed to stand in between the council and the testimony table so they can get the faces of both the testifiers and the council. That's where I stand to videotape the CRC meetings, and he hasn't responded yet, so I'm hoping to get a response on that question today. But, you know, again, Hank was never acted in a way to shut civilians out. The prior review board, PAIC, would occasionally go into what's called executive session where only the media could stay in, but CRC never did that. But CRC never did that. And just as a point of clarification, Hank was not the only person who didn't resign. There were three members of the CRC that didn't resign originally. But it is true that there was, there were five people resigned in protest, a sixth person resigned for a different reason, and then there were three people that were left after that first batch. So I just wanted to put in that.
Thank you very much, Dan. Colleagues, comments before we take a picture? Start, Commissioner Novick.
Hank Miggins, of course, was a legendary figure, but it's really great to see that the legend lives on and to see this many people come in the middle of a workday for this tribute. So thank you all very much for coming, and thanks to Hank for his contributions.
The spirit of God, good people does live on in our hearts. It doesn't matter how long it's been. And so I really appreciate this proclamation. And I appreciated the description of Mr. Miggins as a gentleman and a gentleman. I think he was both. And I remember him through his work on the Independent Police Review Committee, which of course is a really awful thing that we have to be looking at. Did the police do something wrong? And in some cases, yes, they have, and that's a very serious thing. And yet, when I remember Hank Miggins, I remember the fedora and the jaunty smile and the twinkle, he seemed like he had a twinkle in his eye almost always. And so that is, along with his kindness, is what I remember and appreciate. And his service to our community and other communities will not be forgotten.
Well, I just wanted to add, whoever wrote the resolution did a great job by saying that Hank had a steady demeanor because he really did. I always attributed that to his 22 years of service in the Air Force. But I just want to say that he really was. So I think we all, at one time or another, we appoint members to committees of various types. And sometimes you wonder, are they going to, are they going to pan out? Are they going to make it? And I'm really pleased to say that, you know, Hank made it. He was not only my original appointee to the Citizen Review Committee, but he rose to become its Chair and mentor to its Director and to many appellants. So very proud of Hank and pleased to have had the pleasure of working with him and getting to know him as a friend.
We're going to take a picture in a second. I just want to acknowledge that when the mayor issues a proclamation to honor someone for a lifetime of service, this is among the highest honors that the city can bestow upon someone who's made a unique contribution. And we're joined today by so many special people who've traveled here from outside of the state and other places. But I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge at least the elected officials that are joining us, starting with Representative Lou Frederick. Lou, would you please stand? Former state Rep. Mike Fahey. Mike, would you stand? John L. Bell is here representing our junior senator. Welcome. Senator Ryan Deckard is here. Ryan? And our elected auditor is here. Would you please stand? So with that, let's all gather up front and take a family picture with the proclamation. We have the finest photographer in City Hall taking our pictures here. David, thank you. You know, Dan, you have the proclamation. David, can you take, like, your hand?
Yes, yes.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Good, we're good. Hey, David, where will you post that picture so people can get it?
I'll email you.
We'll email it, and even would like to have a picture.
It'll be on the IPR website, too.
Just, we'll give you an email, and you can get a copy of that picture. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Hey, Dan. I gotta get a picture. Good job.
Carla, let's take a two-minute break. Going to take up four more items, and we'll try to have this concluded by noon. Carla, could you please read item number 390?
amend ordinances to increase amounts of short-term subordinate urban renewal and redevelopment bonds.
Take it away.
Thank you, Commissioners. Back to the mundane, I guess. My name is Eric Johansson. I'm the Debt Manager in the Bureau of Revenue and Financial Services. The proposed ordinance before he today amends two outstanding ordinances in order to authorize an increase in the amount of short-term indebtedness that may be incurred by the River District Urban Renewal Area next fiscal year. In addition, the ordinance authorizes a corresponding increase in the aggregate short-term indebtedness in all of the active urban renewal areas. The increase from $20 million to $30 million in River District is necessary due to updated projections of available tax increment revenues for fiscal year 1617. Proceeds from the additional borrowing capacity will fund projects in the district's urban renewal plan and in their 1617 budget. As you may recall, short-term indebtedness implements the pay-as-you-go or cash-financed portion of PDC's capital program. The short-term debt that we also refer to sometimes as dejure financing allows the city to comply with state constitutional requirements that tax increment revenues be spent only on indebtedness. With that, happy to take any questions.
Colleagues, any questions? Thank you. Carla, anyone sign up to testify?
I did not have a sign-up sheet.
Then this goes to a vote.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye. Thank you, Eric. Carla, would you please read item 391?
Establish reporting requirements for political consultants.
Colleagues, before we take the vote, I'd like to just place into the record again the legislative intent based on our last hearing. The council adopted an amendment which clarifies that this would apply to a person providing political consulting services to a city-elected official or a political action committee controlled directly or indirectly by a city-elected official. We've done that by amendment. It is also my intent, and this is to guide the promulgation of the rules, that when, in the definition of political consultant, that we are referring to people who are primarily in the business of providing these services. And that's an important qualification that a number of advocacy groups sought that we make clear in the record. With that legislative history, Carla, would you please call the roll?
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
I just wanted to note that last week, we also considered the auditor's ethics reforms. Although we sort of put them on the table, it's my, I thought that some of them were no-brainers, such as raising the maximum penalty for multiple violations of $3,000. And it's my intent to offer a narrower version of her proposal with a couple of those items at some point in the near future. Thank you, Commissioner Fish, for your leadership on this item. Please to vote aye.
Thank you.
Fritz?
Thank you, Commissioner Fish, for this ordinance, which does provide additional transparency, accountability for elected officials and in the way that we do our public business. Commissioner Novick, there's an update. I believe that there's agreement on a full package from the auditor that's come forward, so I'm hopeful that that will get sorted out sooner rather than later. And thank you again for everybody who's concerned about this. I am on, I believe that being a politician can, should be, and is an honorable profession and that the members of the City Council strive always to be accountable, transparent, and honorable. So this is one more measure that documents that. Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. And colleagues, I am very proud to vote on this matter today and grateful for all the people who've helped us get to this, to this point. I'm proud because we are the second city in the country that has decided to shine some additional light on the work, the important work performed by political consultants. But we're the first jurisdiction in the country to use as the trigger not compensation for services, but the actual provision of services, which is a much broader definition and will ensure that there is even more sunshine. We are, as a city, committed to open, transparent, and accountable government. I believe very strongly in the existing ethics rules what we have, and I look forward to joining Commissioner Novick and my colleagues in the auditor in strengthening those rules. This is something new, and this goes to a basic principle that people have a right to know who is influencing important decisions that we make. And one way we can do that is through a registration requirement. It does not go as far as I would have liked, but we can also celebrate that the barrier to that, at least now, is Article I, Section 8 of the State Constitution, which does provide extremely broad First Amendment protections. In a democracy, political consultants do important work. This ordinance will ensure that in Portland, they do that work in the full light of day. Again, I'd like to thank the people that helped us get to this moment. Oregon Common Cause and Kate Titus represent us, and Mr. Andrajin and Hugh McGavick, the League of Women Voters of Portland, the indefatigable Debbie Iona, Auditor Mary Hull Caballero, Elections Officer Deborah Scroggen. And finally, I'd like to thank the crack legal team of Linda Law and Ben Walters, and a special thanks to Jim Blackwood and Sonya Schmansky on my team. It is with great pride that I cast my vote in the affirmative. Aye. Thank you. Carla, would you, we have two items left, a second reading. And then, Commissioner Saltzman, would you please read item number 392?
Authorize contract with Black &amp; Beach Corporation to provide engineering services for the Tryon Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Influent Pump Station Headworks Primary Clarifier and odor control improvements project not to exceed $6,687,914.
This is a second reading, vote only. Please call the roll.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye. Thank you. And our final item is item 393. Please, if you could read that in the record, Carla.
Authorize application to the Department of Homeland Security through the Federal Emergency Management Agency for a $975,000 grant to replace the Station 6 pier and dock and purchase a boathouse for Station 6.
Commissioner Saltzman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll turn it over to Chief Marco Benetti, who's been waiting patiently all morning.
Oh, well, thank you very much for the opportunity to kind of shed a little light on this project. It's actually not a project yet, but we hope to be successful in a grant application with FEMA and Homeland Security. The dock structure at Station 6 has been falling apart over the years for, well, since the 1950s when it was built. This grant application will provide the funding to help us clean up the river, eliminate some of the, some more of the creosote pilings that have been languishing in the waters for many years. It'll also help us support infrastructure to protect our assets that we spent millions of dollars on for our waterways and protection of City Portland. And the boathouse component of this will provide some safe storage of our assets at the station facilities so we can protect them and keep them out of the elements, too, which tends to provide a lot of ultraviolet damage to our products. So if there's any questions, I hope that this is a project that can be supported by council, and we look forward to moving forward on it.
Colleagues, any questions?
Thank you. My understanding is that there is a match required in this if we get the grant?
Yes, Commissioner.
And that you have money in the Building Maintenance and Equipment Fund that would cover the grant? You wouldn't be asking for additional money from the city?
That is correct, yeah. It would be covered under the normal general fund of the Fire Bureau.
And I apologize for not asking this question ahead of time. If you don't know the answer, if you could just get back to me. I'm happy to hear that we have an ongoing building maintenance fund in the Fire Bureau because in some of the other bureaus, we are lacking in maintenance, ongoing maintenance money. Do you happen to know how much there is in that fund?
Well, right now, it's technically not an ongoing maintenance fund, but we do allocate a certain number every year for building maintenance and ongoing maintenance. But we, the target number would be 3% of the projected maintenance for all of the infrastructure buildings. And currently, I think our normal budget is about 1% that we allocate for ongoing annual maintenance and repair, roof replacements, roof partial replacements, just structural repairs, HVAC units, things like that. And so we try and, I'm the logistics chief, Deputy Chief of Logistics, so we're constantly trying to make sure that we're being as fiduciarily responsible with our funding and try and hit the high points as best we can and extend our dollars so we can get the best bang for our buck in every, every one of our city dollars that we have to spend.
Thank you. I appreciate that, spending the taxpayers' money wisely. So there isn't a particular line item for maintenance in the Fire Bureau's budget?
There is a line item for maintenance and repair. It's a facilities section. It's part of the logistics budget.
Okay. If you could get that number to me?
I'd be happy to, yes.
I'd be really interested. And as I say, I'm happy to have, we have something in there.
Yeah, we try and maintain all of our structures, and we do have a dedicated amount of funding that's proportionally, proportionally allocated for building, maintenance, repair, and furnishings, and appliances, and all the associated.
Previously, we had the general obligation bond that went for some of these big projects, and all of that money has now been spent. Is that correct?
For, the majority of the money has been spent. There's a small portion left over that is going to be allocated for other capital improvement projects that will be in concert with 2010. There was a small amount of money left over from the 1998 remodel bond, and that portion is what's kind of being incorporated in the capital improvements for the other infrastructure for the Fire Bureau buildings.
Great. Thank you very much.
I can get those numbers for you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Other colleague, questions? Thank you very much. Carla, did anyone sign up to testify?
I did not have a sign-up sheet.
Would anyone like to testify in this matter? Seeing none, let's take it to a vote.
Saltzman?
Thanks, Chief. Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
I think this is the second time. Let's hope the second time is the charm in getting this grant. Aye.
Fish?
Aye. Thank you very much. We're adjourned until 2:00.
Done before 12:00. Well done.